Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 14, 2023 Indian Hill Board of Education meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Nick, if you can complete the roll call.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Here.
Mr. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Summerall?
Here.
Mr. Tullis?
Okay, thank you. Next up, we'll do the adoption of the regular meeting agenda. We need to adopt the agenda. May I get a first?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to have an executive session, but we're going to move that to later on in the agenda to accommodate the guests that we have. So with that, we're going to go ahead and proceed forward.
Mr. Summerall, I'd like to invite two of our Experience ships students to join us tonight for the Pledge of Allegiance. We've got Sophia Chen and Nicole Sitchell here, who are going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sophia and Nicole, I know that you're really busy tonight, but could you just go to the podium real quick and tell everybody why you're here tonight and what's going on over there? Yeah, right there, that's fine.
Okay, so we are here as part of the Experience ships launch, which is a new program we have at Indian Hill this year, which gives students an opportunity to shadow careers and learn about like different fields that they might be interested in.
Yeah, so it's our first big community event, and we've invited students, parents, and all of the partners out for this event. And we just, it's just a chance for us to introduce ourselves to Indian Hill and the community and have partners introduce themselves to students as well.
You two are the best. We would probably pick you to work with if we had the opportunity. So thank you for sharing a little bit, and thanks for all you're doing tonight.
Of course, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Davis, do we have any public commentary this evening? We do not. Okay. If not, we'll go to the next.
Welcome, board members. Tonight, we're going to start off our meeting with a special presentation of our new State of the Schools video. And I wanted to direct everybody's attention to the screen for a few minutes. If you'd like to move, board members, so you can have a better view, we'll take a second there and let everybody kind of get set up. And then we will share with everyone in a minute.
Here, Nancy, let me move and then you come.
Hope you enjoy this.
I greet you from the auditorium stage of the number one high school in the great state of Ohio. My name is Kirk Konecki, and it is my privilege to serve our incredible brave family as the superintendent of schools of our nationally ranked Indian Hill Exempted Village School District. Welcome to our State of the Schools presentation. This presentation will help paint a picture of what it means to be brave and provide you an opportunity to see how we do business. I'm pleased to begin by assuring you that our financial outlook is stable. Our focus is to continue our history of being responsible stewards of the investment you make in our schools, evidenced recently through the implementation of an energy savings program, which guarantees more than $150,000 in savings annually, $300,000 in Ohio K-12 school safety grants awarded for construction, $15,000 in grants for science, technology, engineering, and math through the Ohio STEM Learning Network Classroom Grant Program, and quick action by our Board of Education to lock in a long-term loan at 3.75% to cover construction potential overages due to inflation. Ours is a story of fiscal responsibility without compromising the excellence you expect and deserve. The Indian Hill School District earned a AAA credit rating. We're one of an elite number of school districts, only two others in Ohio with this AAA rating. This year, we're seeing another trend that makes us smile: increased enrollment. We want our community to use our schools, and this year, we have invested time examining an important question: Why Indian Hill? During this presentation, we are sharing the stage so that you can hear the answer to that question directly, featuring our staff, featuring our parents, and we kick it all off by placing the stars of our show on center stage: our students.
We're raising citizens because they're well-rounded people.
It's easy to make friends.
I would not have the same opportunities anywhere else.
We have some of the most talented people here, and I get inspired by watching other people.
Without Indian Hill, I wouldn't be the swimmer and student that I am today.
We have all these people around us that surround us with happiness and joy.
What makes Indian Hill unique, I believe, is because we hold high expectations at all times.
This is a place of continual creativity and continual ingenuity. I think our kids are prepared to leave this place and do great things.
Setting students up for success starts with relationships. Our kids know that they belong, and they feel that. And then we get this incredible privilege of meeting kids where they are and taking you as far as we can while we're with you, and it's sincere and authentic. You just won't find it anywhere else.
I am the daughter of educators. Both of my parents were teachers. From our view, Indian Hill was the equivalent of any private school. So why not go to a public school where the quality of the education, the educators, all the curriculums and everything is just like a private school and live in the community? So that's what we chose to do. So we literally moved to Indian Hill for the purpose of our children being able to go to Indian Hill School and become part of this community.
I think another thing that attracted us about Indian Hill Schools versus the elite private institution that our children were at was the diversity of curriculum as the kids get older, right? When you hit the high school level, there are so many more class opportunities where the kids can really pursue academic interest that kind of is usually reserved for a college. Kids are able to start experimenting with different advanced studies at an earlier age, and I think that helps them kind of start forming themselves of what their academic interests are, and it enables them to mature a little bit sooner than they typically would academically, and that's just a little bit of an advanced step as they move into higher learning.
For our family, we definitely made the right decision. I think our kids, Sophie thrived here. I think Christopher is thriving. Wherever you find your child, whatever type of personality they have, there is always something available at Indian Hill.
Here at the high school, administrators and staff will do everything necessary to let students chase their passions and make their visions become a reality.
I'm going to talk to our athletic director. Coach Phelps here. What do you think of tonight's performance?
A lot of fun, we're 2-0 in the league.
Being on stage is a different type of feeling because I like to imagine the people that I love in the audience, but also people that I get to share my talent with, and it opens up a new light for me because when those stage lights come on, like, I get so excited.
I love to swim. It's my favorite thing to do. Without Indian Hill, I wouldn't be the swimmer and student that I am today. The amount of different opportunities that Indian Hill offers. If I were to go to another school, then I wouldn't have the ability to connect with my teachers in the way that I need to. I wouldn't have the coaches and staff that want me to succeed. I wouldn't have the environment that just fosters excellence.
I think we do some amazing things at Indian Hill. Our pep rallies, the homecoming experience, the IH musical events where we're bringing community in. People look forward to spending a Friday or Saturday night on campus. They want to bring their families, they want to gather, they want to have a great time together, and they want to reinforce what makes us uniquely Indian Hill, and that's putting our students at the center of all of these amazing activities every year.
It is very joyful. It's very high-energy all the time, seeing my kids walk through the door and seeing how excited they are. To see me always brings a smile to my face.
I feel happy and I feel grateful. Some people don't get to experience all these things, and I'm very lucky to get to experience like homecoming games, football games, sports, and a bunch of stuff, and it's so fun, and it's just, it's really lucky.
Me working here is always about evolving, and then when I see the investment the community puts into our school, it's a total buy-in all the way around.
People who I'm surrounded by at Indian Hill are one of a kind. They're all smart, great character, people of really high standards who want the best out of their lives. I came here knowing that whoever I'm going to be surrounded by, they're going to be doing the same thing as me, which would be chasing their dreams and getting the most out of life.
So why Indian Hill?
Why Indian Hill?
Why Indian Hill?
Why Indian Hill? Why not Indian Hill? I can't think of a reason why not.
Why Indian Hill? Because its reputation precedes it.
Because I want to be a part of building a better future.
Because you won't find better colleagues anywhere.
Because we provide cutting-edge education while keeping students at the center.
It's a place where teachers and students can come together to be the best people they could be.
It prepares me for the next step.
Why Indian Hill? We make our students' dreams come true.
Students at the center, always. IHHS, number one in Ohio. A best communities for music education nationally. Nationally recognized STEM learning and a top workplace for our world-class faculty and staff. This is our IH promise to you. This is what it means to be brave. This is the state of our schools. Thank you for the gift of your time.
Very well done. So where will that be used? How will we be utilizing that?
We'll be sharing this out on a link tonight and with a press release, and then, of course, we use this not only on our website, we use this when we have enrollment meetings, we use this to share with the entire school community and beyond the school community when we're presenting about the Indian Hill promise and our strategic plan. Again, I want to thank everybody who had a part in the video. You saw our stars, our world-class faculty members and our students, our community partners, and a big shout out to Heather Higdon and her production team for putting this together. I think it's a uniquely Indian Hill product as well. Many schools are doing State of the Schools in different ways every year. This is how we've chosen to showcase what's going on in our district and our culture, and I'm very proud of this, so I hope you are too. Thank you.
I think it was fantastic. Very, very, very well done.
We happen to have a couple of stars next up that are not on the agenda as well, but one of them was a star in the video. So I'd like to now celebrate the success of our Indian Hill High School Aqua Braves. And during the Division II State Swimming and Diving Meet on Friday, February 24th, some amazing things happened again. So I'm going to read off some of this, but Aqua Braves, could you please come on up here to the front? And could we have Coach Matt Harrison come on up to the front, please? And Mr. Phelps, why don't you come up here, too? That way, everybody can see who we're talking about. Aqua Braves, right up here, right up front. You can stand right in front of the audience there, that'd be great. Mr. Phelps, why don't you hit the podium over there with Coach Harrison? We'll let you all talk in just a moment. Senior Gibson Holmes is ending his tenure as a Brave with 10 state titles. Let me repeat that for everybody in the room: 10 state championships. That includes seven individual titles and three team relays. Holmes was named the Division II Boys Most Outstanding Swimmer this year. Additionally, sophomore Jason Zhao was on both state-winning relays for the Braves and broke the state record to earn an individual state champion title with a time of 4:24:01 in the 500-yard freestyle. Our other state champion relay team members include Jack Edmondson, Arjun Valathiam, Jeffrey Winker, Aiden Oak, and Neil Oak. Aqua Braves Coach Matt Harrison, who you know has worked to create this team's legacy, once again earned Coach of the Year locally and was the Division II State Coach of the Year. Congratulations to Coach Harrison. Mr. Phelps, Coach Harrison, you guys want to share a little bit about this unique team and the run they've had the last few years, some of our seniors?
Well, I will get out of the way here in just a second, but I just wanted to reiterate, anytime we have the opportunity to celebrate excellence, whether it's in the academic world, the arts world, or athletics, it's always my pleasure to be able to do so. And when we talk about excellence, I don't know if it gets any better than this: a team state runner-up, as you've heard, a 10-time state champion, a state record holder, multiple relays, a C-H-L, a district, and a state Coach of the Year. And back to Gibson, as Kirk said, the swimmer of the year, Division II at the state meet. So once again, congratulations, and at this time, I'd pass it over to Coach Harris.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you to Brian Phelps, Judy Sichterman, Julius King, and the Athletic Department. We would not have the amount of success that we have without their support. He's always there whenever I need anything, and I could not ask for a better athletic department to work under. They are incredibly supportive of us, and like I said, we wouldn't have the amount of success we've had recently without that support, so I'm thankful for that. This is an incredibly impressive group of young men. There are 11 events contested at the state championship meet, and these young men won five of the 11 events this year, which is unheard of. And especially for a school of our size to have that amount of success is really impressive. Gibson, of course, gets a ton of the headlines and a lot of the attention, and rightfully so. He's done incredible things in his time here. The Gibson Holmes era is officially over here at Indian Hill. He's going to continue on winning championships elsewhere, but he's done winning them for us. But that is just one piece of the puzzle. We have a lot of returning talent, and hopefully, we'll be back here again next year celebrating some more state titles. But these guys are incredibly impressive, they're incredibly fun to work with. I'm honored to win a Coach of the Year award, but really, it's a team award, but I'm honored to stand up and accept that award on behalf of this team. There's no other team I'd rather be associated with, and no other community that I'd rather be associated with, so thank you very much.
I just wanted to share with everybody some OHSA facts for a moment, and some of you, when you get a chance to look at some of this data, it's quite amazing. They don't even keep a list on the OHSA website about individuals winning more than three or four state titles. So Gibson will have a list all his own with this OHSA record. And Gibson's a very humble person, so I know, because I've had the chance to spend some time with him, and he gets these accolades, but he's one of the most humble student athletes you're ever going to meet. But Gibson, you need to understand, there's a difference between good, great, and elite. Gibson is an elite athlete at this level. He is an elite athlete in the adult world already, okay? And so I think it's really important that we take some time and reflect on what it takes to win 10 state championships in a single student athlete's career. It does not happen in the state of Ohio. It rarely happens nationally, so much so that there's no lists. And I think that's really, really unique and special. Congratulations. And Jason, the record that he broke, well, you're going to need to work on that for our new PR next year, right? Right? And I think Jason is driven, and this team is driven. And one of the things I would finish with is Gibson was saying on our podcast recording about a week ago, he always talks about team first. Team comes first, and his teammates, and how much he learned and grew with his teammates. And I really, really appreciated hearing that as he relayed about his career. So congratulations to all of you Aqua Braves. We're so proud of you. Coach Harrison, amazing run. You've been with us now for a few years, and it's just amazing what this team has done. I think they deserve another round of applause. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll take you off the hot seat now. You're welcome to have a seat and relax or go do what you need to do. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Board members, we're not going to read through all of the rest of the correspondence and recognition tonight because of our previous presentations, but I would like to point out a couple of things.
Kirk, one thing, we've got a couple of parents leaving. Just want to say thank you because I know I didn't have a child that was a swimmer, but I had friends that were in between. Swimming might be one of the most challenging because it's early mornings and all-day meets, and so thank you to all the parents that are here for you guys, you know, driving to the pools. We know we don't have a pool here, and there's a lot that you guys go through as a family, and so we really appreciate that you've created a lot of opportunities for your children, and that Indian Hill's been blessed to be able to hold your children up as beacons for the school. So thanks that all you did as well. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to go through just a couple of pieces of recognition at this point, but wanted to point out a couple of things here. Recently, our middle school students earned some individual awards in a state scholastic writing competition, which happens to be the nation's longest-running, most prestigious recognition initiative for students who are doing creative writing, grade seven through 12, and a large source of scholarships for young language art students who excel. Our IHHS student athlete authors included Alexandra Castellini, who earned five total awards at the recent competition, including two Gold Key Awards. That's the highest award given. Hannah Kramer, who earned honorable mention. Lilly Walts, who earned a Silver Key Award. Our middle school student authors included Ardisha Tharani, who earned a Silver Key Award and an honorable mention. So congratulations to all of those students. Also wanted to point out that our IHHS robotics team, which has been competing for a few years now, qualified this year for the VEX robotics competition at the state level, and because of their finish, they also qualified for the World Championships this year, which is a huge accolade for our team and another step forward in the program. We have a number of students competing, and just want to congratulate all of them for moving on. Last weekend was a big academic weekend. Our mock trial team once again were semifinalists for the state of Ohio. They were one of only three teams in Ohio to earn this accolade, and our students earned several individual awards. Senior Joseph Kane kept his undefeated streak alive through the season, capturing his eighth straight award for Best Lawyer. Seniors Ashwini Krishnan and Saraka Singh picked up Best Witness Awards. Junior Sophia Chen, who you saw earlier tonight, and Robin Cochin picked up Best Lawyer Awards, and sophomore Lilly Walts earned a Best Witness Award. Coach Van Oden Allen, who is one of our new teachers to the district, did an amazing job helping lead the students along with some of our partner lawyers in the community. Want to congratulate that mock trial team again for just an amazing run this season. Both teams had great seasons. Last for tonight, want to just mention, this is a first reading tonight for school fee change under letter H there, board members. We will talk about this again next month. There's a summary document for you to look at. And tonight, we have an operations update on our technology and security packages with our project team, so I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to the project team members, and we'll get their slide deck up and going. And again, if any of you wanted to move for that, board members, we'll give you a minute to get set up for the slide presentation, and our team is here. I see Mr. Paytek.
So I'll invite Mr. Richardson, our Director of Technology, and Chris Paytek from MSA Design, as we talk about safety and security. Maybe we could do operations updates earlier because those are tough acts to follow. We are really excited, though. We've been working on our technology and safety and security since the beginning of this project, and it's been almost two years, and we've used a lot of internal and external resources to make sure that we have the absolute best plan when it comes to safety and technology. So I'm excited for you to get a chance to hear about that, and I know that you realize that safety is something that we think about every day on an ongoing basis, and making sure that our facilities exemplify safety is really important. So I'm excited to share that with you. I'm going to let Mr. Richardson, he's going to talk a little bit about technology to get us started.
Just real quick, I'd like to thank all the partners we're great to work with. It was a new experience for us because we haven't done construction like this in a long time in our district, and how blessed Indian Hill is to have some very talented, knowledgeable staff members that made all this work possible, to work with our partners. Some of the people are usually in this room. Mr. Samini's expertise in all of the audio work that is going into all of the buildings, just a wealth of knowledge. Mr. Dupp's decades of video work to put facilities like this in all of our public spaces for future video use. And then Mr. Gruber and all of his work tapping all the different technology partners that we have, ensuring that we have the right technology in place at the right price for Indian Hill. So we're really blessed to have the team that we have. Thank you.
And then if we think about safety and security as well, I want to thank our partners, Skanska and MSA and MCS. They have so much experience and knowledge in doing this that partnering them with our internal experts has helped us develop a really comprehensive plan. Just before we get started with some of the slides, I think it's important to note that we've been working also with partners like the Indian Hill Rangers. Our engineer, Moats, had a group come out that was made up of former SWAT members, and they walked all of our facilities. I will tell you, they were very impressed with what we already had in place, and then when we were able to talk to them about what we were hoping to do, they were even more impressed. So it was good to hear that feedback. We've worked with Hamilton County's Educational Service Center and one of their safety liaisons, and I spoke with the Emergency Management Agency for Hamilton County. So all those stakeholders have been providing input on these plans. None of this has been created in isolation. They walk our buildings and look for vulnerabilities, and then we work, and it's why we got some of those grants that we saw earlier, because we're trying to work on any vulnerabilities we might have. And then while we won't go through every detail tonight, we want you to know that security is layered. There's lots of things we won't talk about tonight, but we are going to be able to share some highlights that will help us understand what's going on with safety. And then, so I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Paytek, and he's going to start to walk us through some of those elements.
Go to the next one. Just to touch on real quick, and we'll get into some visuals, you know, Mark and Jim talked a little about some of the highlights. You know, one of the things we talk about a lot with the team, with the district, with the community as we work through this over the past several years, is, you know, first and foremost, we think about the education, the learning, the culture that's created here at Indian Hill. You had to hear a lot of that with some of the accolades here earlier. So there's always that balance between, especially when it comes to security, right? How do we create environments that are safe and secure, that people feel safe in, but at the same time, we don't compromise the education, the learning, the things that really need to happen here? So there's a lot of effort put into that, and you see that, and I think in some of the imagery, if you've had a chance to see some of the buildings and construction going on. So from a security side, you know, access control, resiliency, looking at layers, as Mr. Nichols mentioned, those are all important things as we talk about security and safety in these buildings. Go to the next one. And the technology side, and these really go hand in hand. It's one of the reasons why I think we felt it was a good time to kind of share these updates together, because there are aspects of security that touch technology and vice versa. So technology, you know, extending learning outside the classrooms, inside the classrooms, both for faculty and for students, supporting that student-centered culture as we've talked about, thinking about reliable and safe access, enhancing collaboration, right? All these things are important. Integration, you know, certainly when students and faculty are in these spaces, you know, making sure that power's in the right place, connectivity's in the right place, access control, wireless, you know, so that, so students and faculty and community can access these tools on a regular basis, and they can work seamlessly with everything else that's going on in these buildings. At the middle school, let's go through a couple of quick highlights on all these buildings. If you go to the next one. And one thing we wanted to touch on, too, you know, we talk about the buildings and the spaces, but at the campus level, there's a lot of things that are being done on all the campuses that are affecting mostly safety and security and technology. So on the high school and the middle school campus, improvements to flow of traffic, you know, as you come onto these campuses. know, as you come onto these campuses, it doesn't just start when you enter the buildings, it starts when you enter the campuses. Signage, you know, having clear access and flow, separation of bus and vehicle and pedestrian traffic, you know, all those things are being improved on these campuses. Landscaping, looking at barriers, there'll be an access road all around the entire campus, which didn't exist before. So for service vehicles, for fire and police, those will be gated, you know, so only certain people can get around those spaces at certain times of day. But being able to have clear access around the buildings, having outdoor spaces for students that are safe and secure, all those things are part of the ongoing effort to make sure that these, the overall campus and the overall environment is meeting the needs of the education and learning moving forward. If we go to the building, just a couple of quick highlights, you know, entrances, right? Clarity. If you remember previously on the campus, the middle school in particular, it was a little bit maybe challenging to find the front door. So having a welcoming place when you come onto the campus that you're going to go to, looking at how we secure those entrances, was mentioned about access control and security cameras and those kinds of things. But also inside the building, we've looked at a lot of things about how to compartmentalize the building. So whether it's during the day or after hours, how we can shut certain areas down, secure certain areas of the building when need be, things like looking at how different spaces can be, the actual users can take ownership of those spaces. And we look at the neighborhoods and some of the spaces we'll look at here in a minute within the middle school. Those are all important things to make the environment, again, feel safer, feel more secure, so that whether you're inside the building, outside the building, if you're a visitor, right, you're always feeling like you belong and that you have a place to be. So if you go to the next one. Entrances, and this will be consistent in all the buildings, how we look at people coming into the building during the day, after hours, whether you're a visitor, whether you're a student, community member, again, feeling welcoming, having a professional environment, the technology in these spaces as well, right? The ability to have digital signage, to display students some of the accolades, again, we talked about, right? Opportunities for that to show up in these entrances where the community members might be coming in. Again, just looking at access control and cameras and how we can make sure that we're allowing people to come in and out in a safe way, but also making it still feel welcoming and inviting.
I think those safer, those entrances too, as you're walking in, again, that's going to be consistent in all our buildings now that we'll be able to have, whether it's students or families or visitors will enter, they'll be able to, you know, have a conversation with one of our secretaries and before they're admitted into the office even, we're going to have some idea of what they're doing, then they come in the office, we have another conversation with them, we get them a badge that we print with our Raptor system, and then we're able to admit them into the main building. So there's several layers.
We are two sets of doors.
Absolutely.
And clear line of sight through all the new windows and doorways in those secure vestibules, which we have not had in all four buildings to this point.
Absolutely. We've talked a lot about the village green space in the middle school. And again, a place, it's the hub of the building, right? Lots of activity, lots of interaction. So things like visibility, you know, we call, we use this idea of natural surveillance as a term. So where it's not just cameras that are doing surveillance, but it's the ability to have faculty and staff and students see and be seen in these kinds of spaces and very important. And technology, again, integration of technology throughout all these areas, places to plug in, displays, places for students to collaborate, socialize, you know, we, I think we talked about these spaces becoming real community hubs for lots of different activities and events and making sure, again, the pieces and parts are there to support that. Right off of the village green, there's going to be a multimedia center kind of space that also serves as our library. Again, there's lots of ways for students to plug in and connect. This is also a space that could be used for a community. You can see there's some small multimedia spaces for things like podcast rooms and production rooms and, again, spaces for students to go and utilize those different resources. And this is going to evolve over time. So having the infrastructure there to support this kind of learning long-term as it continues to evolve is important. And there's still books too, right? High-tech, I guess. On the other side of the village green, there's this project lab space that also has, you can see it's called Fab Shop, so things like maker spaces. And we talk a lot about STEM, you hear that a lot in the district, that's really important to Indian Hill. So these kinds of spaces can support those different kinds of project learning, things like experience ships that were, that's happening tonight, right? These kinds of spaces support those kinds of functions with business partners, things like e-sport, which is becoming bigger and bigger. So wiring these spaces and again, having the infrastructure to allow for those things to happen as technology continues to evolve. Really important, this becomes a kind of a central hub and how these spaces can continue to change over time. Production, green room, I don't know if you guys want to add to that? There's been a lot of time and effort kind of put into these spaces. The neighborhoods, we've talked about these as well. So again, this idea of providing a space for each of the grades and then same thing, you know, layering. So from a security standpoint, these areas can be shut off from the rest of the building at certain times of the day. Ability for students and faculty to take ownership of these spaces is really important. There's access to the exterior, so we think about that as well, again, is that layering to make sure that there's a place where students can go outside in a safe way, come back in the building that's controlled.
I would just echo Chris too, that the idea of flexibility, the former teacher and principal comes out in me that these spaces can be redesigned in moments. You know, kudos to Mark, to Dr. Stewart and all the teachers who've been piloting this technology this year to see how it integrates and does it work well with the furniture we've selected and can they easily move this around. I just think there's a great theme of flexibility throughout all these spaces.
It really creates a new teaching space outside of the classroom, just to add to the way that the teachers can work with different groups. And we've upgraded the audio in there so that students can still work, but also be led by a teacher as well.
Classrooms, right? Those are the places where students spend a lot of their time. Interactive display boards in all these spaces along with, you know, kind of things like marker boards and display boards, mobile furniture, like we talked about in previous board meetings. Again, wireless technology, places for students to plug in, all those things are important. When you think about even global reach and the ability to potentially have, you know, interactive exercises with folks outside the classroom, that's where, these are the spaces where those kinds of things are happening on a regular basis. Go to the next one. Dining commons, again, another space, multipurpose, flexible, as we talked about, you know, both with display and audiovisual environments, but again, spaces that can be transformed, can be used after hours and during the day. It's not just a place for eating during lunch, but it's also a place that can be used for community gatherings and student gatherings. It's more of the larger spaces in the middle school. So it's envisioned that you can have an entire class in here at certain times of the day for events. So having again, the technology there to do that, being able to again, separate these spaces off from the rest of the school after hours, those are all the important factors in spaces like the dining commons. The community room, so this is a space that will eventually be, you know, things like board meetings could be there. So again, having technology for that, community space for after hours during school. This is part of the board office component of the middle school, but it's also connected to the middle school. So not just with things like displays and audiovisual, the ability to broadcast from this, from a space like this is important. But again, multipurpose, flexible, all the things we've been talking about and making sure the space is wired and has the infrastructure to support that.
I think if you're looking at our meeting right now and how we're situated, you no longer will have to turn around to see the technology and so will the crowd. The crowd will also be able to see the technology easily. So I think just learning from what we're doing right now, and again, this is a great time to point out Mr. Samini, Mr. Dups, and all of the efforts that have went in to make sure that these spaces are going to do what we need them to do.
And last one, the middle school is the connector, and we've talked a lot about as well, and the function of that space as a community space. Same thing with layering, security vestibules when you come in. This isn't at the front door, but it's a front door, particularly after hours, being able to separate this from other parts of the building for after-hours events like the events going on tonight in the high school. Technology there as well to showcase what's going on, maybe in the theater, there's an athletic event going on, you know, showing those, those activities and accolades and celebrating what's going on in the Indian Hill School District, all the things that can happen in a space like that.
Another quick security note is that Braves Lane obviously is a really important part of our community and it's been something that's been going on for a long time. Our, our parents, whoever needs to come during school day will be able to go in there, but the building will stay secure. So when you come in that front door right there, you will be able to go into Braves Line, but you will not be able to go through to get into the main building where students are or go through Braves Line. However, on evenings where we want to open that space up because there's an event, we want people to be, will be able to do that as well. So great flexibility here in design.
At the elementary school, getting touched and based on the campus briefly, same kind of thing with the middle school and high school is at the elementary school, improving overall flow of traffic, you know, these, that salt tooth when that goes down, parking, drop-off, pickup, all those things. The bus traffic, there's already been some improvements that have been done with that and how you come onto the campus, you know, where the, the new additions located for after-hours functions, landscaping, the playgrounds in the back and how we kind of are securing and setting those apart as well from the rest of the building are all important parts. And there will be some improvements you'll see here in a minute to the existing entrance as well. Inside the building, in the new addition, being able to separate that off from the, from the main building for certain functions and activities, access control throughout the entire building. So there have been some upgrades made in the existing elementary school as well, particularly at the entrance. But landscaping flow, again, all those things I think are important that you'll see improvements at the elementary school.
Sir, can you go back up to, would people be able to, I'm just looking at the parking, would people be able to walk through the building to park at night where the bus parking is to get to the gymnasium?
Yeah, so the, the bus parking will serve multiple functions, if that's what you're asking.
I'm just saying like if there's a, you know, fourth grade players, you're going to have a lot of people there, there's not a lot of parking right by where they're going to park. Where do you want to cut through the school to get into the gymnasium or the field?
I think on a special evening where you have so many families, we absolutely could open that door and then that walkway goes all the way through to the new unified arts and the gym. So yes, we could, we could absolutely set that up.
And it connects one hallway, Mr. Tallis, instead of two, which is great.
Exactly. It's one main corridor now.
You can see that in the other drawing there, yeah. This is the existing entrance to the elementary school and again, improvements to that from a safety standpoint, we're adding another layer of doors and access control. Once you get into the existing reception area and then there's some upgrades to that as well. Right now, it's fairly open, so improving the way you come in, the overall look and feel, again, use of displays, making it feel like the other campuses, so there'll be consistency there. Next one, this entrance into the new addition. Again, there's some access control and things that can happen after hours, some displays, electronic signage, same kind of things that we're seeing at the other buildings in the new addition. The village green, similar to the middle school, so that central hub, again, will be used for lots of different things, multipurpose, flexible. You can see some of the technology with displays, places for students to gather and showcase and collaborate their work, and then access directly to the iLab, which will again, be a high-tech space for all kinds of different kinds of activities, three printers and things like that off to the right. The next one. So it's the iLab space itself, again, different kinds of equipment and activities and places for STEM, project-based learning, integration of different kinds of learning activities, all the things that you would expect in a space like that. Art studios, you know, there's, there's aspects of those as well that have a certain level of technology, as well as just the fact that there are spaces for, for project and creativity, but interactive displays, writable spaces, wireless, all those kinds of things. And then last, the music spaces, again, there's certain amount of audio/video in these spaces for recording and playback, displays, wireless, again, the ability to support all different kinds of media and music as those programs evolve. Primary school, same thing on the campus, right? There have been, there are some improvements being made to the overall traffic flow and separation, some barriers being put in place between the playground areas to improve and enhance that, as well as the entrance is obviously one of the big changes that you're seeing at the primary school that help with that as well. Entrance, similar to the other buildings, these security vestibules, so we can control access and surveillance and better visibility to the front door that didn't exist before. And just the overall look and feel, again, more welcoming, more inviting. There's some barriers, if you've been out there recently, some low kind of masonry walls that are being put in place that are used for seating and other functions, but also to help with some of the barriers and security aspects of that building to kind of integrate that into the landscape. Images of the entrance, again, similar to the other buildings, so the ability, as Mr. Nichols mentioned, to, to access, secure some of that access and control access different times a day, make it more welcoming and inviting, clear visibility, you know, displays as well with digital signage, so we can showcase a lot of things that are going on in these buildings. Multipurpose room, again, completely transformed as well and redone to make that just, just the way it sounds, multipurpose and multifunctional. So different kinds of technology to help support that, there's some kinds of activities that'll happen in there throughout the day. The floor in that space has been leveled, so there's no longer steps. So again, it just makes it that much more flexible as well.
It's amazing how light and bright a room can be when you punch four windows into a wall as well.
With a few windows?
It's amazing.
Yep.
Through getting into that multipurpose room, what, where's the egress and ingress to get in and out of that?
So the primary will still be, once you come in through the front door, the new front door and the second set of doors, you would, you would enter into an entrance, you can kind of see it off to the right there in that lower right-hand picture. So you actually come in from the main lobby and then there's ways that you still get into the theater and there are some other ways out of that space, through the theater and out the back.
Is the main entrance, you go, you go through the vestibule and it's there right there make a right?
That's correct. Yeah, right before you go into the theater.
But you can also back into it through the auditorium like you used to be able to?
Yeah, exactly. This, this village green space, again, is starting to take shape, but same thing, I think, again, there's a level of interactive, this being the primary school, we look at technology a little bit differently, but there's still that ability to have interactive spaces that are supported by technology, again, displays, wireless. This is a space that obviously may be used for certain kinds of gatherings and functions, so having that audiovisual capability and those kinds of things help support those events is important. Yep.
This, this is already done, right?
It's pretty close. Yeah, if you go out there today, it's starting to look pretty close to that. So there's still some finishes and things going on, but yeah, it's, it's starting to look like that. And the dining commons, again, similar as we mentioned with the middle school, right? A multipurpose space, much more open, so there are, there are some aspects of technology here as well. This will serve as other functions during school, after-school, community events, the ability to reconfigure the space. And again, having some of the audiovisual components, the visual display components within these spaces and just access to them, both from access control and security and all those things that are all aspects that will enhance the use of these dining common spaces.
Are we doing it, unless I missed it, to the high school entrance here?
The high school, yeah, it doesn't get touched on this particular project. The only thing that I will say is that we are, one of our latest grants was for some security film, and so we're strategically creating a campus-wide plan where we would add that to various locations throughout the district.
When it comes into high school today during the school day, are they going to the front desk before they're, are they buzzing before they come to the front desk? They check into the desk?
Exactly. So you, when you come in, you would buzz the door up here and then you'd have a conversation with one of the office staff who would then let you into the first doorway, then they can get a little bit better view of you and then they can let you into the second door, you come to their desk to get signed in.
Yes, can you talk a little bit about the primary school auditorium, like how far you are and what kind of technology updates are we doing?
Sure. Yeah, the auditorium, I mean, we've shown the images of that, complete overhaul of that space. I know a board meeting or so ago, we talked about some of the theatrical components of that space. So there is a whole new lighting, theatrical package that'll be part of that auditorium space with audiovisual capabilities, new digital displays, projectors to allow that to be used for a variety of different things along with what it is now. That's because that space is also heavily used as a classroom during the day, that technology is being done in a way that's flexible, so teachers and students can continue to use it as they need to during the day, but it can also transform into a performance space, much like the high school auditorium. So with lighting and acoustics and all those kinds of things, along with the, the packages and the theatrical components that'll be in that space, really enhance it and allow it to be used in a lot of different ways, new seating, new finishes. If you go out there, you'll see a lot of it's actually is close to being completed, but yeah, it'll, it'll function very much like a state-of-the-art theater space besides just a classroom space.
Additionally, the videos too. Mr. Dups' video equipment, that'll also be housed just for that space so that we can broadcast from there as well, just like we do in this one. I'm sorry.
Would the kids have the option of like, supposedly they were going to watch a movie there, like you know, on a rainy day, but they cannot go out for recess, can they?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
And you know, great question, I was saying, one of the things I would point out that Mark and Chris brought up earlier along with, with Jim is we've had 14 pilot classrooms operating throughout the district where our teachers have spent time experimenting with both the technology and the furnishings. with both the technology and the furnishings, and the teacher input has been crucial to design these spaces for being able to accommodate everything that a student might want to do and that they may want to deliver with their students throughout all of these spaces. And that's been really great feedback that's not only helped the district financially to plan out what we're gonna do in all these different spaces, but has helped us to make sure that the technology that we are selecting is appropriate, and also the security aspects of it are appropriate.
And Mark, I think you just have a couple last comments about technology and some of the savings.
Yeah, we.
Mark, would you just go in front of the mic in case people are listening out there in the ether?
When we got later in the project and we looked at the spaces and we had defined more of how we wanted to use some of the specific, especially the STEM-oriented spaces, we did decide to add some additional video and audio and some additional wiring, and also wanted to build in some infrastructure for future updates. Before those walls are up, it's easier to have everything done. So I want to give props to Skanska for their willingness to work with us on bringing in different partners and their willingness to accommodate those people. We also, when we started with the original scope, we were able to, via different partner arrangements, bring that original cost down by 40%. And we also were able to time the wireless infrastructure piece, where we were able to pull that out of the project, buy that with district funds, so that we could make use of our E-rate funding, and that saved the whole wireless infrastructure by 40% as well. So that was a substantial savings for the district, just good timing for us.
Appreciate it, gentlemen. Nick's over here smiling when he hears those words. Thank you for your time, appreciate the presentation, and I thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, as always. It's fun seeing those, more and more fun seeing the project come along. So moving on to the superintendent's report, Mr. Summerall, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
Item eight, under letter A, we've got a resolution declaring impracticability of transportation. Again, that's offering a payment in lieu of transportation example. There's an attachment there. Letter B, there is an approval ask for several overnight field trips. Again, we're starting to have more and more of these as we move through with all the activities that are going on in school, once again, including that robotics team world championship down in Dallas. Letter C is our personnel actions, tuition reimbursement, professional meetings, and I will come back to number two later, which is the administrative contract, but those are approval of some classified staff contracts, retirements, resignations, classified substitutes, transportation bonus program that we've talked about in order to recruit and retain our transportation employees that we've shared, and approval of some supplementals for both spring sports and winter sports playoffs. That list is fairly lengthy, as you can see. Number eight down there is some tuition reimbursement, and number nine is third-party payments. Those aren't direct payments that we make as a district, but we make for our teachers through partners for work that they're doing academically, and you also see that under number 10. I'd like to go back to item two, if that's okay, unless there are any questions about the other items before.
Just if you can give us a quick update on how we're doing with bus drivers in terms of retention, and then also, I see we're gonna do some summer intervention work, maybe Dr. Stute can give us a.
Sure.
Let's start with Dr. Stute on summer intervention, and then we'll go over to Mr. Nichols for the transportation bonus program.
Well, can I start by giving Jim Nichols a huge thank you, because summer intervention is something that we love to do, but it was a bit of a puzzle this year, as we figured out when we could have it based on which building would have power or not have power. And I think that we overloaded our partners with millions of emails to try to figure out how we could make it happen again this year. So we are able to offer it. It took a lot of partnership between all of us to figure out when we could have access to the buildings. We're going to host it at the elementary school, and we're going to host it in August for two weeks, and it's gonna be for students who are incoming grades one through five.
And so I just think it's important to note that we're focused on meeting every kid's needs, right? And so that kids are always growing, whether they're advanced, or maybe they're struggling a little bit, or have different needs, and so I appreciate the work that you all and the team are doing around that. I think that's important to note, that we often are able to talk about some of our students that are really, really exceeding with some of the students that in a moment in time may need some extra special attention, we're gonna give that to them, and it doesn't mean that's the place they're always gonna be in, but I think that's important to acknowledge.
If I could expand upon that just for a minute, Mr. Marks, I want to also acknowledge the work of Christy Booth. She is a second-grade teacher who's going to be coordinating our summer school program. And because of some of the conversations we've had, we had more teachers sign up this year to teach it than we've had previously, which is wonderful. Additionally, those teachers have really made good cases that they want to offer this summer opportunity for students, not just based on scores from tests, but what they know about students. And students who might score fine, but they know they might need a little bit of extra structure over the summer in order to maintain some of those reading, writing, and mathematics skills. So it's just an incredible opportunity to thank our teachers on how well they know our students.
It's another great example of a teacher-led program in the summer where summer school runs like a machine because of Christy.
I'm pleased to report that since we've been talking about this incentive program, we've already found two drivers. We've got some drivers that, you know, for various reasons, family, and many of them are retired, and so we're excited that we've already gotten two people to join, and so we're looking for a few more. I will tell you that if you're out there and you're thinking about becoming a bus driver, there's nobody better than our bus drivers. They build the most amazing relationships with our students. In many cases, they get to know them over years and their families as well. So it's a great group to join, and they take wonderful care of our students, but we've already gotten two, so we're looking for a couple more.
Thank you. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I think it's important, I know that so many districts really struggle to keep consistency, and so to your point, from a dad's lens of having one youngster on the bus and potentially hear another one, those relationships are important, because that's the first educational experience they have coming in, and it's the last educational experience they have going home. And so appreciate the work that you and our transportation director, I know Mick's involved in making those things happen a little bit too, so appreciate that.
I'll add as an anecdote that I offered to take my nine-year-old daughter to school, and she now declines me because she prefers to ride the bus. Just also as a reinforcement about how amazing our staff is, I think we are the only school in the region that has not had to cancel a route, to my knowledge. And that's amazing, just to add to your point there, Mr. Marks.
We should shout out Mrs. Spurlock, because our transportation director, they have done all kinds of things to make that possible, so congrats to them.
Kudos to our entire transportation staff, and Jim has done great work with this program. I think it's another great example of human resources trying to be creative, and we appreciate the support. Like to also talk about another creative program and go back to number two for a moment. That's the approval on the docket here for an administrative contract for our current K-12 dean of students, Danielle Lince, to become the high school assistant principal next year. We started talking about this, Dancy will remember, along with former board members and our former HGO leader four years ago, when I was brand-new, about a succession plan. And we heard very clearly from our teacher leadership at that time, we have amazing, world-class staff, why aren't we looking to develop some future leaders? Fast forward, four years later, we've had a dean in place, we have five other teachers on special assignment doing teacher-lead work across the district in things like innovation coaches and our strategic plan coordinator, and our teacher leaders are doing amazing work. Danielle has learned the easy way and the hard way, I think, this year, with some firsthand experience, and I couldn't be more proud to have a veteran teacher leader who I think represents us all so well as a nominee for this position. She's earned it, she wants it, and she's a leader, and she came from Indian Hill. And that's what it's all about, to have a succession plan in place. So I hope that you will consider, at this time, board members, if there are no questions, eight A through C, 10 E, including number two.
Can I just like to make a comment about the succession plans? That's, it's so revolutionary, really, from the way it was when I first got on the board, and really happy to see it working, because for so long, when we had turnover, we were just starting over again. And it was so, it was just disruptive, it wasn't great for the kids, it wasn't good for you all. I just feel like this is something that has been just a transformation, so congrats, appreciate it.
And I think just to add to Nancy's point, if there's a way we can promote that and celebrate that throughout the district, I think it's a big deal. Promoting from within is so good on so many fronts, that we need to make sure we're looking at that holistically and making a big deal about it.
So with that, I will make a motion to approve item eight, A through C, one through 10, 10 E. E.
Second.
Nancy, say it.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Tollis?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichholz?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Summerall?
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Lince.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, board members.
Okay, we can proceed to the treasurer's report. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Under my report this evening, I have the minutes from the February 7th meeting, the approval of the financial reports for month ending February 28th, 2023. Items C and D are very similar. These are resolutions to purchase items. One's a school bus purchase, the other item's synthetic turf using a southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council for the bidding process. What the Southwest EPC does is they handle all of those on a state level or a regional level to go ahead and get bids, so we don't have to go through that process. We were then able to use them to get those buses and that turf at the lowest price we can that have already been bitted out through the process laid out in Ohio Revised Code. Item E is to approve the following contracts for the 2023, 2024 school year. The first one is for psychology services. This is on behalf of All Saints Schools. This is through our auxiliary fund that we run on their behalf. It's $102,600. Item two is rush truck centers. This is what we talked about under item C. We are purchasing those buses, a regular bus and a lift bus. And just kind of tell a little backstory about this. When I arrived here seven years ago, our bus fleet was in not the best situation. Nancy, if you can recall those conversations we had about the bus fleet, we were getting repairs, we were borrowing buses. It just wasn't working very well for us. To use the pun, some of our buses were over the hill. They were very much so. We made a concerted effort to bring that fleet back into sort of a modern stage. We bought some buses, we put a lot of buses into it quite fast, and then we made a commitment to buy two buses a year after that, with some work from Mrs. Leonard and then later Mrs. Spurlock, on sort of how to really turn that bus fleet over, so we weren't turning buses in that were worth nothing, that were essentially large yellow paperweights at that point. So we're able now to get buses out in a timely manner, get new buses in, make sure they're fuel-efficient, make sure they've got all the proper safety equipment in it. The reason I bring this up is I wanted to talk about a word that we've all heard a lot through my five-year forecast, through the construction project, is that nasty word that we're all well aware of is inflation. So just last year, we purchased four buses. The reason we purchased four last year is because of the pandemic and some instability, I don't know if that's the right, instability with the state funding, we weren't sure how that was going to look. We made the determination that we weren't gonna buy buses. So we bought four last year. One was through an insurance claim, and then the other three we got because there was a state grant for $45,000 per bus that offered us to get our buses at an even greater discount. So we took advantage of that. Back in September of 2021, the beginning of last school year, those three buses we purchased on that date, we agreed to a contract of $107,000 per bus. In April, we added one more bus to the list because of that state grant. That bus, we agreed to a contract of just under $113,000. Okay? The buses I have on this evening, you'll see the regular bus is just under $140,000, and if we don't agree to do this resolution tonight, that price will go up in April. And none of these buses have arrived in less than eight months into our system. So there's that other word of supply chain. So I just wanted to give the board an example of some of the things we, you know, we talk a lot about inflation on a general level. I just wanted to give the board and the public a little idea of some of the things specifically that we face, and this is one of them.
Mick, what's the lift bus?
The lift bus is a special education bus. It's designed to have a lift, it's actually a larger bus, I believe. Jim, do you know?
So any student who might have any kind of mobility challenge, we could bring that bus out, and it has a lift where they can bring that all the way down to the ground, the student can get on, and then lift it up and bring them into the bus.
And we do have one of those buses currently in our fleet, it's just time to replace that bus at the national process.
This is just another great example, and I know we talked last month about doing the capital planning with the software system you all approved that Mick and Jim were working on of, you know, people talk about tubas and buses and having a plan, and there wasn't a plan in the district before Mr. Davis arrived, and now there is, and being able to regularly replace these pieces of equipment as they depreciate, we need to replace them as really strategic, long-term, and they're never gonna get cheaper.
Well, to piggyback off that, I was just thinking, because I know you're jumping ahead here in a second to number three, but Mick's done a great job with capital asset management, to your point, so that this field turf isn't a big shock, you know, so great job on those pieces.
So just to add to that, Noel, and what we've done over time is we've created a fund where we're putting, we're setting money aside each year in order to make sure we're able to replace this turf as it's needed, make sure our kids are safe, make sure that those are the best fields they can play on, and that they, as parents and coaches, we feel as comfortable as we can possibly feel. So that's item three, it's a replacement of the synthetic turf over at Shawnee Field.
When will that happen?
That will happen this summer. It will be ready for fall sports. Yep. Item four is Scarlet and Gray Custodial Services. This is a three-year contract. This was a, this is to replace the three-year contract that expired. We entered into that partnership three years ago. It's been wonderful, as far as I've heard, I know there's been some hiccups, but they've been an excellent partner to us, and they've also committed some advertising dollars. So it's been mostly a positive experience, we're happy to have them here, and I think it'd be good for the district to have them here three more years.
So has anything changed price-wise from the previous contract to this one?
So again, that inflation word comes up. Obviously, you know, the cost of labor in their area has gone up. We got a great deal three years ago, they honored that deal through the three years, where for some other districts, they had to go back into the middle of contracts and say, "Look, we're having some labor issues, we need to get people in, we need to pay them a fair wage," and they renegotiated those contracts with us. It was held the way we bargained three years ago, so as in year four, we're looking at some increases in that as well, to make sure that they can be fully staffed.
Now Mick, it was a competitive bid against the Maze in Blue team for custodial services, and they lost, correct?
The Maze in Blue actually did not enter into that bidding process. They were intimidated by the Scarlet and Gray.
Okay, just making sure, okay.
So item F is to approve the following construction contracts. We have change orders with Skanska to revise the science lab casework, to do some underground hydronic piping that wasn't included in the GMP, to replace kitchen UDS and ancil fire suppression, technology enhancements that Mr. Richardson had discussed earlier, this is Skanska's portion of that. And then the fifth one is masonry lintels at the exterior openings, and I believe that one is at the middle school, right, Jeff?
Yeah. Just a comment about these as well. We've had some real detailed homework sessions with the project team and with our team, and while Mark Richardson's here, along with some of his teammates, Bill, I just want to say thank you again to Mark, to Jim, Melissa, some of our other teammates who aren't here tonight, the work they've put in to try to work with the project team and to find savings that is impacting the project over the last month is just so impressive to get to see internally, and not everybody gets to hear this all the time, but I think it's really important when you're managing a project this large. And again, Mick is seeing it like I am every day, Jim, Melissa, and the team with Mark and his staff are going over things with a fine-tooth comb, and that's helping us save money and keep this project on time and on budget, and the project team is being responsive to that, and so I appreciate that work on the part of everybody.
Second that, absolutely. Moving on, under acceptance of donations, we have a gift from Peter and Laura Kleikamp that went to the athletic department, it was for the golf outing back in the fall, $2,500 donation. The foundation donated $1,000 to the elementary school for a biology grant. They also donated $11,400 to the elementary school for an The foundation donated $1,000 to the elementary school for a biology grant. They also donated $11,400 to the elementary school for an iLab laser cutter. The boosters donated $600 for a Latin Club bussing trip, $1,200 for wireless headsets, and $2,500 for the Quiz Bowl Chicago trip. Eli Leekde donated $1,200. Actually, he donated the MakerBot Sketch 3D printer, had an estimated value of $1,200. That was a great donation for the elementary school. The IH boosters, again, with an AED equipment donation, $8,000. That's for athletics. That is a fantastic donation. We're very excited to get that. And not only we've got equipment in place, but this will just supplement what we currently have. More safety for our athletes and for our students is always appreciated. And then again, the IH foundation, there was an heirs donation for the athletic department, $895. And as always, I extend my deepest sincere gratitude to the folks who want to donate to our district and make this experience above and beyond what any other students get in the state of Ohio.
Just to add, it strikes me every time we see this, there's so much more than just the monetary aspect of these donations, looking at what's going on the night next door with the experience ship launch spearheaded by the foundation, other things the boosters and the PTO have done. That's in addition to financial compensation, just how thankful we are and how lucky we are to have these fantastic partners.
Okay.
I'll move to approve nine A through G9.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Mrs. Eickholz?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Summerville?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to item 10. We will need to make a motion for executive session.
Make a motion to move into executive session for the consideration of appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employer official, specifically superintendent and treasurer's contracts.
Second.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Eickholz?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Mr. Summerville?
Aye.
I have it at 7:42.
[631.72]
When love comes in, oh la la la. When love comes in, oh la la la.
We dance, we dance. 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 Feel the heat, feel the heat. 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 Yeah, one. Yeah, one. Yeah, one. What you want, what you want? Yeah, one. What you want, what you want? What you want, what you want? Give you all I want. Make it good for you. Good for you. Good for you. Good for you. What you want, what you want? Yeah, one. What you want, what you want? What you want, what you want? Give you all I want. Make it good for you. Yeah, one. What you want, what you want? Give you all I want. Make it good for you. Good for you. Good for you. Yeah, one. What you want, what you want? Give you all I want. Make it good for you. Yeah, one. What you want, what you want? Give you all I want. Make it good for you. 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 Would you forgive? 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 Thank you.
Text from Denneker.
Oh.
Okay.
Just one second, please. Just want to make sure. Cover here.
Sir? Okay, reconvene. So now we're on to item 11, other business by board administration. Item A, I'll go ahead and read through these.
Yeah, we'll have to vote on each one.
Okay. Item A, resolution to change the April 18, 2023 Board of Education meeting to April 11, 2023 at 6:30 PM.
Make a motion to approve 11A.
Second.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mrs. Eicholz?
Aye.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Mr. Sumral?
Aye.
Okay, item B, consider amended treasurer contract for Mick Davis. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve item 11B.
Second.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Mrs. Eicholz?
Yes.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Sumral?
Aye.
11C, consider amended superintendent contract Kirk Konecki.
Make a motion to approve item 11C.
Second.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Mrs. Eicholz?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Sumral?
Aye.
11D, resolution to accept memorandum of understanding with the Indian Hill Educators Professional Organization.
Make a motion to approve item 11D.
Second.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Eicholz?
Aye.
Mrs. Singh?
Yes.
Mr. Tullis?
Yes.
Mr. Sumral?
Aye.
Just a moment on that last one, I'd just like to say thank you while Julie is here with us, IGPO's leaders, Julie Piper and Jennifer have worked with us very closely to continue this partnership, and I think that that resolution is evidence of the partnership. We're really happy to be able to take care of veteran teacher leaders in the district in this way and amend the contract to do so. So thank you for Julie's work and thank you board members for supporting that.
And thank you for your time for waiting around and all the work that you have put in, we truly appreciate it. Thank you.
We got great teachers.
Sorry I had to be the last item. Okay, is there any other business this evening?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Exclusive coverage on the Indian Hill Television Network has been a copyrighted presentation of the Indian Hill High School Video Department.